Good evening and welcome. Thanks for being here tonight. We're going to call this meeting back to order at 6:32 PM. Today is March 22nd, and the lovely Sharon Irkfits will lead us in the pledge.
Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Board members may have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor? No one opposed? Thank you. Our next item is our consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second that we approve the consent agenda as listed minutes from our last meeting? Recommendations for the Committee on Special Education, preschool special education personnel changes and recommended bidders. So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. And wait, did I miss one? Oh, Treasurers, I was like, I missed one. Can I have a motion and a second that we approve the Treasurer's report for January 31st, 2022?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? Everyone in favor? None opposed? We have no special reports this evening, so that brings us to Lila.
Hello, good evening. So last week marked 100 days left until graduation for the class of 2022. So all the seniors were given a small gift package to celebrate this courtesy of best buddies. Spring sports have begun once again, and March has just been an incredibly very busy month at the high school with juniors taking the SAT on Saturday, March 12th. States for DECA was two weeks ago, and many students won multiple awards, including four seniors that are now moving on to Nationals in Atlanta. Model UN had its final conference of the year at St. John Fisher with multiple students winning both in and out of committee awards. The robotics team received the chairman's award at the Greater Pittsburgh Regional. Mamma Mia was this past weekend, and I went, and I just wanted to say that it was an incredible performance by the cast and crew. The class of 2023 ran a book drive for the Galisano Children's Hospital where juniors were able to bring in new books and be entered into a raffle to win a parking spot in the senior lot. Science Olympiad competed at States this past weekend at LeMoyne College. Seniors Diana Black and Maddie Cutter placed eighth in the state in the Rocks and Minerals event and 10th in the Dynamic Planet event. Senior Katherine Neeland placed fifth in her trajectory event. And Key Club is currently conducting a drive to benefit Ukraine. This fundraiser is collecting toiletries and household supplies until next Monday. At Bay Trail, modified sports will begin on April 4th. Shopping Kart Madness began last week, and this is a food drive competition between the three houses to benefit the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf. And this week, the Bay Trail Drama Club will present Dear Edwina Junior. At Harris Hill, third graders learned all about magnets and forces of attraction through means of experiments. And two fifth grade students were recognized by Storyworks because of their excellent creative fictional stories. There were thousands of applicants to this competition, and only 10 were selected as finalists, and these two fifth graders were some of them. At Indian Landing, in honor of Women's History Month, second graders read about and discussed the importance of the late Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg and Shian Sheng Wu, who was a physicist at Columbia University. Mrs. Diaz's class created their own how-to books to teach their classmates how to do something new. At Cobles, second graders are making their own drums, maracas, and tambourines to play along with the symphony and space concert. And last week was also Spirit Week for Music in Our Schools Month, and included dress-up themes like Irish Music Day and Rock and Roll Day on Friday. And finally, at Scribner, in gym classes, students are jump roping for the American Heart Association, and these students have already raised $8,300. Fourth graders took a trip to Dayton's Corners to learn all about one-room schoolhouses firsthand, and the Girls on the Run program is back. Thank you.
Wow, you weren't kidding.
Yeah.
I was busy. Board members, questions or comments? Questions, comments?
I would just say, again, it's a wonderful presentation, but also you get to present it, and I get to apologize to all the parents for the drums we're making in second grade at Cobles and sending home. So I'll take credit for that in terms of the drumming that I'm sure will happen at home. But that's really cool. Thank you for all those updates.
Does that beat the recorders, or do we still do that?
Oh, we do recorders.
I might take drums over recorders. So you are up.
All right.
Super reports.
Great. So this evening, I do just have a couple of staff and student honors, just a couple of updates for me, and then I'll turn it over to Tasha Potter, some special guests in the audience, and Dr. Maloney, who will provide us an update on equity and access coming out of that office, our Department of Equity and Access. And then I'll turn it over to Dan for our, sorry, Dr. Driffl, for business updates as we continue to move our budget planning forward as we look for our May vote for our budget. So update, robotics award, we've heard a bit about, and just congratulations to our robotics team, Rolling Thunder, 15-11. They received the chairman's award at the Greater Pittsburgh Regional. This is, and we've talked about this before in last years, this is the highest honor within first robotics, and it's awarded once at each competition. So winning this means that our robotics team has an automatic in to internationals taking place in Houston this year, and so our team is very excited. Beyond that, the team also captured several awards at the Finger Lakes Regional Competition. The team won the Excellence in Engineering Award. Junior Nick Vessa, who actually came and spoke to the board around robotics, earned the Dean's List Finalist Award. And a huge congratulations to team mentor Larry Lewis, who earned the 2022 Volunteer of the Year Award. And as you might remember, Mr. Lewis has been involved with our team for many years as a mentor, so much so that we had actually brought him on our staff as, also as a paid advisor, still considered a volunteer because he's not full-time for us, but really the work that he did as a mentor, we brought him on. And so a couple of years ago, he joined us officially in that capacity of also being a team Penfield member. So congratulations to our team. It's amazing. I did speak with a couple of the advisors today at the high school and opened that invite now that we're getting back to typical meetings to bring them in, in either a May or June meeting to do a presentation to the board like they have in the past. DECA awards, congratulations to our PHS students who earned awards at the DECA State Career Conference. I won't read their names. They're on there. They're in our agenda, a great picture here, and several of them will be moving on to the International Conference in April. I always do just mention DECA. This is one of those clubs when we talk about at our district that there really is a club for everybody. For years, Penfield had a DECA club, and then it sort of went away. The interest wasn't there from students. It's been a while now, but we've built that, and that really came from, originally from Jamie Myrna in the Business Department at the high school and students who were interested. So one of the things I think Penfield does so well is that if there is student interest in a club, we'll find out a way. And each year, more and more kids are winning awards, and we're really building quite a powerhouse team. So congratulations to those students and their advisor. Behind me in the board, if you're watching from home, you will see lots of student artwork, and that's because this month is Youth Art Month, and it's an annual observance each March to emphasize the value of art education for all children and to encourage support for quality school art programs. In celebration, elementary students' artwork is on display at tonight's board meeting. It's absolutely amazing. We'll, you know, have that up after the meeting if people want to take a look. And as much as I absolutely can never say how proud I am of our students and the artwork they have in Penfield, I also have to point out that we have some of the most incredible art teachers, art educators that instill in our students that power of art. And I know for a fact that if I went to Penfield many years ago, maybe my picture was up here, but in a different district far away, I was told I could only carve things out of balsa wood because I had no art talent. And I know that doesn't happen here in Penfield, and really, kids really learn to love art and find their own voice through that. So congratulations and thank you to our art teachers. I have just a couple of updates. Wouldn't be a board meeting without a COVID update, so I'm really looking forward to not doing these soon, but this is some good news. So we've been monitoring every week, every Wednesday on our webpage, we post the active cases. The active cases on this slide are from the last board meeting. So last time we met at a board meeting, it was March 1st, and that next day, we had 12 active cases. That March 2nd was the first day of mask optional. And then the Wednesday after that, there were five active cases in the district, and then on last Wednesday, the 16th, there were two active cases. This is actually the lowest number since we began posting each week way back on September 22nd, 2021. So, you know, we're seeing obviously less COVID cases. It's also, you know, it's also true that those active cases might not be a complete accurate number all the time because a lot of it is self-reporting. However, our schools are going to begin distributing, we sent an email yesterday, at-home COVID tests every week on Thursdays as long as we keep getting them in from New York State. So we're going to keep sending them home, and if you ever need one and you're out, you just have to reach out to your building main, your school's main office, or even the public library has quite a few of them. All of those COVID tests we really wished we had six months ago, we now have. So the reason why that's important is that we are continuing to encourage parents and guardians to test their student when they are feeling ill or after they've been notified that there might have been a possible exposure in school. So just on behalf of our school nurses, who are incredible, please remember that while COVID might not be in our community as much as it was, all those other things are. So when we moved to mask optional, we immediately started seeing stomach bug, strep throat, colds being passed. And so even though you might not feel good, take a COVID test, but if you have that fever of 100 or higher, or you're just not feeling good, please return to those days before COVID, which was stay home, see your doctor, make sure you're healthy before you come to school. And as always, reach out to your school nurse if you have any health-related questions. Some good news, just a little bit of our Penfield Education Foundation. The Penfield Education Foundation was established in 2016 by a group of community faculty and parent leaders who believe that education is at the heart of our community. The mission of the foundation is to gather and administer funding and resources to provide grants and scholarships to enhance learning opportunities for all students attending Penfield Central Schools. They're most known for the scholarships. It used to be the Penfield Scholarship Association. They merged into the Penfield Education Foundation, and every year give scholarships out to students heading, graduating. But the other thing the foundation do is sponsors annual grants to support education opportunities outside of the must-haves in our district operating budget. And the Penfield Education Foundation continues to build a very strong partnership with the Penfield Central School District. The foundation, just like PTAs, is not the district. They're separate, but we work as a partnership to build that. And so the education foundation grants this year, the committee went through and approved two grants. One is $800 that they're going to be giving directly to a counselor at Bay Trail to create a caring closet, which will provide free access to personal hygiene products, clothing items, school supplies, snacks, et cetera. You know, as a school district, we really were tied by rules that we can't like buy things like clothing for students all the time. This would help, and one of the examples they gave is when students head off to the Washington trip, they ask like, if possible, if you can wear khaki shorts, and so here's a way to support those students, as well as all those personal hygiene items that if you have a middle school child, I think will be very helpful, deodorant and things like that, which sometimes can be embarrassing to ask for, go to the nurse, but it'll be a free closet that supports our students. The other one goes along with Cobles Music is Cobles general music teacher asked and is granted $1,500 to purchase a class set of ukuleles for our fourth and fifth graders. And so this is outside of our general music budget and not something in our curriculum. So we see these opportunities with the Penfield Education Foundation to work kind of like a pilot. Let's see how it goes, but she is very excited, and we are. I'll just let you know that we worked with the district, the foundation worked with us the district, and we believe that the district can purchase those for about $1,500 as opposed to about $1,800. So what I might be circling back at the next meeting is the foundation may write a check to the district, and then per board policy, you would have to accept that. But it saves some money, which is great, so more money can be saved for other grants or student scholarships. But at the end, Cobles fourth and fifth graders starting next year will be learning a little bit about the ukulele. That's my update. Any questions?
Questions, comments for superintendent reports?
You were so close.
Did I sigh out loud? I thought I was getting away with no questions. Well, that's okay.
Just curious, for the robotics, you said it's in Houston?
Houston.
How are they going there?
I had like a really good robot joke, but they're taking an airplane. They're flying to Houston.
They're going by drone.
Yeah.
They're taking an airplane?
Yes.
Now, their equipment?
Gets shipped. Gets shipped by, now, I'm not 100% sure, but when it was in St. Louis and once, I believe Detroit, they shipped by ground the robot, and then they fly the students and adults.
Leaving two weeks earlier than planned, or the actual event is? Just curious.
I don't know the answer, but I will tell you one thing. When it comes to logistics in the robot, I have no doubt our robotics team has a plan already figured out to make sure that robot is ready and in place when they arrive. Do you know, Dr. Maloney?
Former, yes, high school principal.
So this is very interesting. They actually build multiple robots so that in case one breaks down or in case they need to ship one, and yes, very interesting.
Ah.
Yes.
That is interesting.
So they probably ship, my guess is, they ship-
They have a Plan A and a Plan B?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, because, you know, to go to Houston from here, it's a ways, like if it was just-
And sometimes they drive the robots. Not the-
Yeah.
They drive, they-
They put the robot in a vehicle and drive-
They put the robot in a trailer and drive the robot to the competition.
Yeah.
They transport the robot by automobile.
They transport the robot, yes.
Got it.
It's pretty amazing because it is international, so students come from all over to compete, teams, it's not just the US, it's Canada and sometimes outside, you know, worldwide. I don't know with COVID and travel and all that, but it's really cool. It's an international competition, so we're really excited. It has been two years since we've been able to go to one because of COVID and travel restrictions. So the seniors, I can tell you, are very excited because, you know, 10th grade and 11th grade, it didn't happen, and now senior year, they're going to be able to.
Okay. The only other question I have is, will it be livestreamed, or is there the opportunity to?
Typically, it is livestreamed. I can work with the robotics team.
Oh, wait, we've got, we've got-
CCTV's on it.
Livestreamed and on CCTV. Livestreamed and on CCTV.
There you go.
Thanks, Dave Runner.
You know, I talk about sometimes it takes a team, it's about a team, so that's it. This is how we work here. We've got answers for everything, but very excited for those students and can't wait to have them here with the robot.
You've answered my questions.
Awesome.
Great.
So I will turn it over now to Mrs. Potter, who's going to give us a start with an, start off an Office of Equity and Access update.
Yes. Good evening, Board of Education and community. I will be providing an update from the Office of Equity and Access, but I'd also like to invite up part of our team from the Office of Equity and Access because partway through this update, there will also be some connection to the work that the Office of Equity and Access is responsible for leading. So with that, I'm inviting up our Director for Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services, Mr. Scott Dreschler, our K-12 social worker, Ms. Melissa Green, and our K-12 social worker for Equity and Access, Ms. Devaney McClary. So I'm going to start by just sharing that the Office of Equity and Access is responsible for a number of things, but I'd want to first highlight that this overarching umbrella of diversity, equity, and inclusion is work that each department has the responsibility of leading. And so in partnership with the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, I work collaboratively, we work collaboratively to develop structures that ensure equity in our staff recruitment, our hiring, our support of retention and promotion of a diverse faculty and staff to represent a more accurate cross-section of the district's demographics. In partnership with the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, we work collaboratively in evaluating and selecting curricular materials that support all students' growth and opportunities for learning. In partnership with the Assistant Superintendent of Business, this office assists with aspects of the budget pertaining to access and equity, and we recommend staffing as needed to ensure full access and equity implementation. And so what I'd like to do in highlighting the responsibilities for oversight from the Office of Equity and Access is share those very specific areas, one of being special education and pupil personnel services, harassment, bullying, and/or discrimination reporting, social emotional learning initiatives, and also serving as the Dignity for All Students Act DASSA District Coordinator, Section 504 ADA Compliance Officer, the Liaison for Homeless Children and Youth McKenney Vento, and Foster Care Liaison. So the highlighted areas are the areas that we will focus this evening as part of our Equity and Access update. So with that, I'll begin by talking a little bit about the McKenney Vento Act, which provides services and supports for children and youth experiencing homelessness. Homeless, in this definition, means an individual who lacks a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So homelessness may include sharing the housing of other persons due to the loss of housing, economic hardship, or similar reasons. So our Board Policy 7132 defines the district's role and responsibility for educating our students in temporary housing. So what you'll see here is a continuum for a process that begins with communicating with our building-level support team that a student has been identified with concerns of homelessness. We then have a student housing questionnaire. This helps to answer some questions as well as identify the inadequate living situations and supports that may be in existence, and then we help to determine the services that a student may be eligible for under McKenney Vento. So then the Office of Equity and Access confirms McKenney Vento eligibility, and a stack system to track and account for children form is completed. So the details within this form really indicates the school district of the current location, the school district of origin for the student, and the school district participating in placement or the district of attendance, at which point all of these steps are followed in the process, and then transportation arrangements are made. And I'm really proud because of the teamwork that we have, and in collaboration with our K-12 social worker, Melissa Green, we've been able to establish this process and implement it across our district. So one of the things I'm just going to highlight and reference this evening is that we are working towards evaluating and establishing systems and structures, and you're going to hear that be part of our theme this evening. So another one of the systems and structures has been with Dignity for All Students Act DASSA. So the intent of the Dignity for All Students Act is to afford all students in public schools an environment free of discrimination and harassment. So the law states that no student shall be subjected to harassment or bullying by employees or students on school property or at school functions, nor shall any student be subjected to discrimination based on a person's actual or perceived race, color, weight, national origin, ethnic group, religion, religious practices, disability, sexual orientation, gender, or sex by school employees or students on school property or at a school function. So our Penfield Board of Education Policy 7555R1 defines our district's role and responsibility for the Dignity for All Students Act. So I've been working very closely this year, again, to establish structures with our Dignity Act coordinators to develop the structures for meetings as well as to consistently implement a process for reporting and investigating for harassment, bullying, and discrimination. Within our district, we have Dignity Act coordinators at each one of our schools. Scott Hazel is our DAC at Cobles, Tessa Perez at Indian Landing, Kristen Brozma at Harris Hill, Meg Madison at Scribner, Michelle Smith at Bay Trail, and Katie Shea at Penfield High School. And so using the New York State Education Department's DASSA guidance for local implementation, we've developed a process that includes a checklist for incident reporting and investigation. We have a reporting form that we've been able to revise this year. We have questions that help to guide the DASSA investigation. We also have a plan of action for both the targeted and the offending student, and strategies to consider when working with our students. And so next, what I'd like to highlight here is that we have on our district webpage our reporting form. This reporting form, if you go to departments and then under Office of Equity and Access, you will find the harassment discrimination reporting form. This form helps folks within our community, and we encourage any member of our district community. So that includes our staff, our faculty, our students, our families, bystanders. Anyone can report incidents of discrimination, harassment, hazing, or bullying, including cyberbullying directed against any of our students. Also, within DASSA, in 2019, there were amendments to the Commissioners' Regulations for implementing the Dignity for All Students Act. This amendment now includes the Crown Act, which protects students' rights to wear or treat their hair however they desire without the threat of racial discrimination or loss of access to school, participation in activities, and inclusion and opportunities inside and beyond the typical classroom. So it is the responsibility of school districts to create a culturally responsive and sustaining school environment that reflects the diversity of students, including their hairstyles, and supporting students' self-expression. The enactment of the Crown Act provides the opportunities for districts and schools to engage students, staff, and the community in the process of revisiting and revising codes of conduct and dress codes to include the provisions of the Crown Act and the Commissioners' Regulations regarding DASSA. And so during our district October DASSA meeting, because we've established a process where we're meeting, I'm meeting with the DASSA coordinators four times during the course of the year, this Crown Act and this update for the amendment was shared with the team. And so under DASSA, the responsibility includes teaching staff and other school personnel so that they have an awareness of the Crown Act. School personnel understanding that formal disciplinary action against students based on their natural hair, texture, and protective hairstyles is prohibited. School personnel understand that given their inherent position of authority over students, they're responsible for preventing racial discrimination and supporting all students' access to school, participation in activities, and inclusion for those activities. And the Crown Act helps us to promote school and student belonging and engagement, reduce disparities in school discipline, and increase educational engagement and academic success, and protect students regardless of their gender or gender identity. So this year, we have also made updates to Policy 7555R1 to include language in support of the Crown Act. to include language in support of the Crown Act. And so now, as I turn over to the team, I'll just highlight that the Office of Equity and Access is responsible for the oversight of our district's social-emotional learning initiatives. As a district, we are prioritizing the social-emotional learning needs of our students, and we acknowledge that there's a need for culturally responsive, social-emotional learning. Students can have vastly different perspectives on whether they feel supported and safe in the same classroom, how they experience racial, ethnic, or gender discrimination, economic inequities, and traumatic events. These events can negatively impact how students react to everyday situations with their peers and teachers, and therefore, it's important for us to support our students socially and emotionally through an equity lens using Castle's core competencies. And those competencies include self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and making responsible decisions. So the research tells us that there are three principles that conform how a school or a district address the well-being of our students. Principle one is learning is a cognitive, social, and emotional process. Principle two is SEL instruction enhances students' well-being and increases their academic achievement. And principle three, students in schools that incorporate social-emotional learning at a full scale experience increased academic gains, are better equipped to persist, and master difficult academic content. And so with that, I'm proud of the work that our district is doing in developing and ensuring social-emotional learning is embedded in our system and structures. I'm also very proud of the partnership and the regular collaboration with our K-12 social workers, Ms. Melissa Green, Ms. Devaney McLeary, and our Director of Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services, Mr. Scott Dreschler. So I turn the presentation over to them.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the Board of Education as well. You, if you don't know, I love being here, and oftentimes, I'm not invited back because I do like to speak. So highly involved in the positive things that are occurring in Penfield. But again, thank you to Ms. Potter as well, and the wonderful colleagues sitting next to me, Devaney McLeary and Melissa Green. They're two K-12 social workers that are new this year in our district, and we're here to provide just a little bit, a couple of the initiatives that we're working on behind the scenes in all six of our buildings to help kind of support everything that Ms. Potter had just shared there. So if you take a look at the image here, it's SEL, social-emotional learning, and there's four main initiatives that we're working on here. It's the multi-tiered system of support, you may hear that as MTSS. It's the frontline RTI, RTI span stands for Response to Intervention. That's a system that we're using, or are going to be using. A universal screener, we'll get into a little bit about that, and our Second Step resource. One of these things is what Mrs. Potter had talked about, is that academic excellence, and this all relates back to that whole child, that academic excellence is inclusive of the SEL initiatives that we're working on. So, to kind of break the roles of the K-12 social workers into this T is the multi-tiered system of supports would be more of the Melissa Green area, and the Equity and Access would be more of the Devaney McLeary. And those are how those systems fit underneath. So that multi-tiered system of support, I'll have you look at that. I don't want to give away all of the wonderful things that they are doing. I'm going to let them please brag about everything that you're doing with our buildings. And again, like, these are things that they're doing. They're navigating through the buildings, and they're building on the good things that are already occurring. We have some of these systems set up in place, but this is really to kind of bring consistency across four elementary buildings, bring consistency as you transition into the Bay Trail and transition into the high school. So, another part of the K-12 social workers, how can we continue to build on that authentic connection? So we wanted to build on that authentic connection through collaboration and support through this guided process. So there's ways that we can access these roles within our district. And one of those is through that building-level recommendations. So we, as a district, we meet in our BIT building, or BIT team, once monthly. So something that could come out of that would allow them to go back to their buildings and then access through their teams. They would reach out through that third column in the middle there. They would reach out based on a need to one of our two social workers, whether it be through that multi-tiered system of support, whether it be through the SEL initiatives that Devaney is working through, through the DASSA, things of that sort. So they would reach out, and then these two would coordinate a time to go work with them in collaboration with the mental health teams that are already present within our buildings. So we're very lucky to be able to have this K-12 additional resource that helps supports a full-time psychologist within our buildings, a social worker, and a counselor within our buildings in addition to that administrative team. So that's kind of how we can access them. That increases that more of that authentic connection, like, this is how we can utilize their knowledge. Getting into the multi-tiered system of support.
Yeah. Thank you for having us. Glad to be here. So one area that I have been gifted with task this academic year was to identify programming that would help us generate opportunity for data collection to help to build that continuum across all of our elementaries through our middle school into our high school to formalize opportunity for interventions both internal to the district as well as our partnerships with community resources to best support student needs. And so we have researched immensely, and we're provided approval from District Office to make a purchase for what was formerly frontline RTIM Direct, now RTIM MTSS Program Management, which is basically a house for all of the information that's generated through all tiered interventions for students. There is opportunity to generate data both with internal evaluations that we support through, you know, typical Tier One or those interventions that all students receive, in addition to some more specialized or strategic services that students may need in addition to those Tier Ones, as well as those much more formal processes that we utilize at what's identified as a Tier Three, which incorporates both special education as well as some of those more acute, community-based partnerships in meeting needs like mental health stability. This program allows us to house all of that information in the same place and affords opportunity for access across buildings and helps to really build that continuum of shared information as a student starts with us in pre-K, all the way up to secondary education and potentially post-secondary if there is a need for transition and continued planning. I am very excited, for those of you that know me building-level historically, I am a data geek, and I appreciate the opportunity that comes from problem-solving and decision-making with easily accessible and valid data and information. So, very looking forward to the continued development and opportunity to introduce across buildings throughout the district. And we are looking at implementation starting next year, and obviously, continuation of fine-tuning how that program is utilized to maximize the benefit to the students.
So in addition to that multi-tiered system of support resource, if you think about RTI and then multiply it times 100, that multi-tiered system of support really helps get all of our variabilities within our learners from both sides of that spectrum. Another thing that we're looking, as Melissa Green talks about data points, is a universal screener. So we have numerous data points when we're talking about academic standards and things of that sort, reading and writing goals, and areas of strength and areas of need for students. This universal screener is something that we're going to be able to purchase and roll out next school year for all students kindergarten through 12th grade. And this is individually administered by students. It can be administered, we're still working through some things. I don't want to go into too much depth because I don't want to steal Devaney's thunder because she's doing so much work with this. But this is going to give us those data points on where and how we start our Tier Two and Tier Three, and what we're lacking from our Tier One, is this universal screener. So you can see that the goal is to launch next year.
So in addition to, I don't know if you can hear me, the universal screener, the data that we collect from that will actually kind of flows really nicely into our social-emotional learning curriculum that we have already been utilizing as a district, we use Second Step. So I've been working with elementary as well as Bay Trail to just sort through how teachers have been using their SEL time. And we are planning a relaunch that will happen as of next year to just kind of level set everyone to teach Second Step the same way. And this is just, it's a really nice curriculum because, as Scott was kind of sharing with the universal screener with the data that we have, it's a Tier One intervention, so all students will receive this intervention, and it kind of coincides with the supports that students can then receive from like, mental health support staff in the building, so. I'm not very long-winded.
No, Devaney did a great job because the universal screener is such where it's hard to identify Tier Two and Tier Three needs if we don't yet have a Tier One instructional model set up. So that Second Step really is, it's a revamp, it's a reroll out. And she's now meeting with some of the department meetings to figure out what is the needs and how can we do that? Because they've been exposed to it, we have some of these things occurring in pockets. But again, some of this whole initiative is to bring the consistency across all six buildings so that we can identify the needs after that Tier One instruction has occurred, and really just pinpoint how we can help students succeed in all areas.
And I'll just share that we've been working also with Dr. Maloney's office to be able to create and formalize an SEL block for our students for next year. So every day, students will receive SEL time in their classrooms.
That's exciting.
So we're going to continue with the update. And as part of the update, we want to share some of the work that we've been doing that's connected to diversity, equity, and inclusion specifically. So with that, I would like to just spend a little time highlighting these three frameworks that come from New York State Education Department. And so the first framework is the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, which was published January 2018. And it was at that time that the New York State Board of Regents directed the Office of P-12 Education and Higher Education to convene a panel of experts to engage with stakeholders to develop from the ground up a framework for culturally responsive and sustaining education. And so, the CRS invites all stakeholders to work together to meet the diverse and unique needs of the students and families within the communities in which we serve. And here, that's our Penfield Central School District. And the CRS is designed to elevate student voices that have been oppressed and marginalized, to promote and engage students in positive outcomes and learning environments, and empower them to think critically. The second framework here on the screen is also from the New York State Education Department and the Board of Regents. This framework is on diversity, equity, and inclusion in New York schools. This call to action was published April 2021. So New York State Board of Regents launched an initiative to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion as part of a priority for all schools across New York State. And so this call to action suggests that districts are responsible for elevating the longstanding issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Districts are responsible for establishing data targets, setting policies, reviewing and modifying curricula, amongst many things. So the call to action provides guidance for districts when implementing and sustaining diversity, equity, and inclusion elements. Of the guidance, it tells us that we need to have a DEI Core Team or Governance, and we should also have subcommittees. The next slide, Dr. Maloney is going to go into those subcommittees. But one of the things I'd like to highlight from the first two documents is that they are begging districts to really have a comprehensive approach towards creating culturally responsive environments for students. And so this comprehensive approach includes many things, and it's also listed in our subcommittees. But when you think about this, as I started the presentation this evening, talking about the responsibility of each department, that comprehensive way into creating spaces where students feel welcomed, affirmed, and valued means that we have to take a look at all facets of our system. So that includes how we engage with families. That includes the curriculum and instruction. That includes those positive supports in welcoming and affirming environments. That includes how we hire, and we promote, and we sustain a diverse staff. So those are the things that live within these frameworks that are really important for the community and the board to know that this is how we are structuring our work as a district. The final document that I would like to reference is the Policy on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, which was published May 2021. And so this policy, also from the New York State Board of Regents, encourages and supports at the state and local level to create within every school an ecosystem of success that is built upon the foundations of diversity, equity, and inclusion, access, opportunity, innovation, confidence, trust, respect, caring, and relationship building. All of our students, again, need to have connectedness to school. They need to feel supported, and they need to feel that they belong. And as you see, some of the areas, the Office of Equity and Access is responsible for overseeing, as I referenced McKinney Vento, as I referenced DASSA. They are all places that help all of our students have placement and see themselves in our district. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Maloney now, and she will highlight the work of our DEI subcommittees.
So as you may remember, last spring and summer, we asked for volunteers within the school community and across stakeholder groups to serve on these DEI subcommittees. So as you'll see on the slide, there are six subcommittees which align with the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework. And on the slide, you can see that each of the subcommittees and the work each subcommittee has been conducting. Each subcommittee is facilitated by a district administrator. The role of each subcommittee is to further the district's work by establishing a culturally responsive approach to their designated focus, collectively ensuring equitable outcomes and access for all students. So the six subcommittees listed across the Inclusive Curriculum and Assessment Subcommittee, which is facilitated by myself, the Ongoing Professional Learning Subcommittee, which is co-facilitated by our Director of Humanities, Sheena Conway, and our Assistant Director for Professional Learning, Kevin Marriott. The Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee is facilitated by Mrs. Potter. The Human Resources Workforce Diversity Subcommittee is facilitated by Dr. Kenny. The Diverse Schools and Learning Opportunities Subcommittee is facilitated by Scott Dreschler. And then the Welcoming and Affirming Environment Subcommittee is facilitated by Mrs. Marsh, an assistant principal at PHS. So I will walk you through the Inclusive Curriculum and Assessment Subcommittee, as that's the Subcommittee which I facilitate, so you can understand the flow of the chart. And the Inclusive Curriculum and Assessment Subcommittee vets and provides feedback on the outcomes of the district's Grading for Equity Committee, as well as the Curriculum Council. This Subcommittee also serves as an advisory committee making recommendations specific to curriculum and instruction. So I'll give you an example. Our Subcommittee met last week and gathered feedback on a document which the Grading for Equity Committee is currently drafting, which articulates the district's philosophy of grading and grading principles, which all classrooms will implement in the 2022-23 school year. And next month, we hope to have a draft of a tool which the Curriculum Council is developing to determine whether curriculum is culturally responsive for the Subcommittee to then provide feedback on. So the subcommittees are a great way for our stakeholders to have voice and for us to receive input and feedback from the various stakeholders. And when we talk about stakeholders, there are families represented. There are students. In fact, on the Grading for Equity Committee, the students provide such valuable feedback, and it really allows students to have a voice as well. And then, the third box under the Inclusive Curriculum and Assessment Subcommittee, as the Board knows, we continue to work on the adoption of diverse texts, K-12. And most recently, as Tasha mentioned, the DEI Core Committee, which meets monthly, reviewed New York State's roadmap to implementation of the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework. And this roadmap is a tool And this roadmap is a tool which the State Ed provides us. And as our committee reviewed the roadmap, it was evident, the work these subcommittees are doing is not only helping with the implementation of the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, these subcommittees are affording us opportunities to hear multiple stakeholders' voices and also to hold ourselves accountable as a district in the work. And transitioning to this next slide, this is a slide that we, I believe we have shown multiple times here to the community and to the board. And just a reminder, this graphic is at the core of the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework. And if you look, for those at home, you probably can't read the fine writing, but the core of the tree is students. And then stakeholder groups are the branches. And the four priorities are the leaves of the tree. And as a district, these four priorities, and you'll see them listed there, they are also our district priorities for the school year, driving our work. Welcoming and affirming environment, high expectations and rigorous instruction, inclusive curriculum and assessment, and then ongoing professional learning and support.
Okay, and so now I'd just like to highlight some of the work of our Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Core Team. And so I'd like to walk you through a timeline of the meetings that we have participated in and some of the content that has taken place during those meetings. I'd also like to highlight that during each one of these meetings, we have prioritized the work of our Diversity, Equity and Inclusion subcommittees. So as Dr. Maloney has just walked through, what those subcommittees have been responsible for within their discussions and how we are looking for those stakeholders to advise the work that we're doing, both at our DEI Core Team and as a district, we've really wanted to take time during each one of these meetings to highlight that work. And so in June, before I even transitioned formally to Penfield, we held our very first meeting. And this was a place where we spent some time unpacking those New York State Education, Department of Education's frameworks. So we formed our team, we looked at the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, we highlighted the importance of the why for ourselves for participating as members of the team, as well as the why for the state producing the documents and sharing with them and having the accountability for New York State schools. During the month of September, we spent some time taking a look at our organizational equity spectrum. And really, it's about how do we share our public commitment for equity? How do we utilize transparency in data and have that data help to inform the decisions that we're making? But more importantly, inform how we put those actionable steps in place to ensure that we are honoring and valuing the work that comes out of the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, but then also the needs of the culture of our community. During the month of October, we spent some time talking about the function of the team, who we were as a team, how we would show up as a team, how we would contribute as a team, and really anchoring into team values. We also developed our Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Statement. And it was here that this Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Statement reads, "We will acknowledge, respect, honor and value the diversity of our community by welcoming all cultural identities, orientations and abilities. We will ensure that all feel seen, safe, excuse me, all feel safe, seen, heard and represented. We are committed to educational equity." Then as we transitioned through this timeline during the month of November, we brought to the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Core Team, a document that helps us to promote an environment free of discriminatory language. So this discriminatory and harmful practices and language document is essentially used to ensure the welcoming and affirming environment exists for our students, our faculty and staff, as we have developed this document to create the awareness of offensive terminology, but more importantly, provided replacement terminology to be used when folks didn't have the appropriate language to use. So these terms, we have offered as guidance so that we can prevent the harm and the offensive experiences that we may find ourselves engaging in with students. And a protocol was also developed to promote a school environment free from discriminatory language and practices. During the month of December, we started doing some action planning. We talked a little bit about what does our three to five-year plan look like. However, we realized that our work around diversity, equity and inclusion will be work that we will continue to need to be engaged in, so it will go beyond, it will surpass five years. But we wanted to start to frame some of our ideas around what do the next three to five years look like? So we took a look at the target, you know, what is the strategic reason for the work or the actions that we're going to be engaging in? What are our goals? What are our very specific things that we want to make sure that we're accomplishing? What are those concrete, those tangible, those winnable actions that we can find ourselves demonstrating? What does our implementation look like? And then more importantly, when we think about the scenario, what will happen at the beginning, the middle and the end within this process that we'll be engaging in? On the next slide, as we transition through the last several months, during the month of January, we talked about quick wins, right, as part of our action planning. And so for us, a quick win is demonstrated with high impact, yet it's easy to implement. And so as you see here on the screen, a number of things were offered as quick wins. We determined as a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Core Team that we really needed to anchor in and access the voices of our students. We needed to make sure that there were ways that we were reaching out and communicating the work that we were doing with our district and within our, in our community. There was a thought around a quick win being anchoring in the team and members of our community in book clubs, learning together, reading together, unpacking and growing together. We also talked about having presentations embedded in our school experiences and learning for our students. We thought it would be very important to think about additional ways to disseminate the information from not just the DEI Core Team, but of our subcommittees. And one other thing that we thought would be a quick win was to display student images and artwork within our school, to have that representation show up for them as they were entering and transitioning the halls throughout our schools. During the month of February, we talked about our internal and external communications. And as Dr. Maloney has already referenced, during the month of March, we took some time to assess our progress as a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Core Team by using NISID's Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Implementation Roadmap. And what we noticed was, we are here in the beginning, this is our year of awareness, we're growing our awareness this year, and there are three phases. And so we acknowledged that we are doing some things, and we have a lot of work still to do. But because we are approaching it using a comprehensive plan, it's extremely important to pay attention to each area within our system.
I'm going to walk you through a timeline which represents the work the district has been doing outside of the DEI Core Committee. And as you may recall, this past July, Mrs. Potter and I presented to the community through a Board of Education meeting on what is culturally responsive teaching. We also, in July, established the DEI subcommittees, which I had previously mentioned, in addition to designating the priorities of the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework as the district's priorities for the school year. This August, we held our first community conversation, and during this community conversation, we shared the results of the equity audit. We introduced the district priorities and that they are aligned with the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework. And we gave viewers a tour of the Office of Equity and Access website, in addition to answering communities' questions. On opening day, which was also in August this year, when all of the district faculty and staff returned from the summer, we introduced to the entire district, the district priorities through our opening day message, their alignment to the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Framework, as well as why this work is critical for all Penfield students. In September, we entered into an amazing partnership with PRI, the Partners in Restorative Initiatives, to help with the implementation of restorative practices K-12. All schools established DEI teams, as well as restorative practices teams. As a senior leadership team, we restructured how we meet as a full administrative team. Now, all principals, assistant principals, directors and district office administration meet monthly to continue this work. Faculty meetings at each of the buildings are aligned with the work. During our monthly leadership meetings, we work as a team on the agendas and content for the next month's faculty meeting, so that all faculty meetings are aligned to this work. We model for the principals and administrators, answer questions, and then they transition back to the buildings. So in October, all faculty meeting presentations were culturally responsive sustaining, under, excuse me, culturally responsive sustaining education, understanding the why. And also in October, during the Superintendent's Conference Day, all faculty and staff engaged in a presentation on connecting restorative practices to the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework, which was presented by PRI. Transitioning to November, in November, all faculty meetings continued to unpack the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework with a presentation titled, "The Why, the What and the How of Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education." And if you will remember, all of the building principals presented to the community during a Board of Education meeting at the beginning of November, on how the district priorities are being implemented within each school. November was also when our second community conversation occurred. During this community conversation, we were fortunate to have Dr. Sean Eversley-Bradwell from Ithaca College, leading the conversation and engaging our community in a question and answer session. In December, faculty meetings were facilitated through community circles. We believe it's important to model the restorative practices, which we are expecting teachers to, to implement in their classrooms. So as Tasha mentioned, we introduced the Discrimatory and Harmful Practices Language Document. And it, I think it's important to note that this document was vetted by some of the student groups at the high school to ensure that student voice was captured. And those groups include the Black Student Union, the Gender Sexual Alliance, Sexuality Alliance, as well as Mosaics. And in December, it was really the introduction for faculties to the document. And then in January, based on feedback that we had gathered from faculty, community circles were facilitated during the faculty meetings to allow more time for faculty to really unpack the discriminatory and harmful practices language protocol. And then in February, all faculty meetings were focused on the welcoming and affirming principle from the Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education Framework. The facilitation of these faculty meetings modeled for faculty community building circles in addition to an active listening protocol. And then in March, faculty participated in a values activity through community building circles during each of the faculty meetings at the buildings. And on the timeline, you'll also see our most recent community conversation, which was at the beginning of the month.
And so now we just want to invite the board and the community to our next community conversation. So this is in addition to the ones that had been previously scheduled and posted on our district website. We would like to have an in-person community conversation, strengthening our community. We will once again invite Dr. Sean Eversley-Bradwell to help to facilitate this conversation. It will also have an opportunity to hear voices from the community, as well as student voice and family voice will be a part of the evening's plan for a panel discussion. And again, this will be in person, so we ask that you save the date for May 25, 2022. It will be held at the Penfield High School Auditorium. And more information and details will be forthcoming with the specifics for the time of that evening, as we are finalizing those details. And so now, I'm going to close this update from the Office of Equity and Access and ask if there are any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. For members, questions, comments?
I have a comment. Sorry. First of all, I would just like to applaud you for the amount of work that you've done this year. It's very clear that you have been working very hard. And I think you've also recognized that it's a process, and our work doesn't necessarily end, and there's not an end to it, and it's ever-changing. I would also like to applaud you. I heard more than once that you're involving students, and I think as a school district, we're, you know, it's always about our kids. And I think including them as that agent of change makes this work even more vital. So nicely done.
Thank you.
I second the wow. Knowing from my many, many years as an educator with special needs kids, whenever you're trying something new, it is a process. It doesn't happen overnight. And sometimes we forget that, that we want it to happen yesterday. But I, I see and I appreciate every aspect that's going on, because with that process, we will move forward. So thank you. Thank you.
I had a question, except I don't remember what it is anymore, because I'm already wowed. You know, it's about the data, but I'll come back to it. But very, I think it's very, very impressive, and I appreciate the comprehensive nature. And I love that, the visual with the tree, and it all, it just made me think about, all that work is, it's like the roots of the tree, because if you're not doing the deep work, then the tree's not going to stand there, right? Like, and so that's what, it just made me think that I'm so very impressed with all the work that goes into this, and it's also very broad. It's broader than I thought, really, because we talk about bringing the silos together, and I didn't really think about, you know, all these policies we have about the foster families and how we're bringing all that together. And, and so thank you really for being here, and very impressed with the work.
So I would just say a thank you to, to Tasha and Leslie, as well as Scott Drescher, Melissa Green and Dabney McLeary. I think that what's critically important, as I said here, is these are, many of these slides, the board has seen, members of our DEI Core Committees, parents, teachers, staff, students have seen. But in terms of really utilizing our board meeting to present to the full community and be online, and it's on PC TV right now, live streaming, just encourage folks to take a look through. When you hear sometimes the cultural framework, or the framework for cultural responsive education, you know, you can get caught up in certain aspects. But I, I think the board has sort of expressed their wow in the sense of how broad this is. It encompasses social emotional learning. It encompasses how we support our students who fall under McKinney Vento, our homeless students, our foster students who are with us. It's truly every kid that comes into our building is coming in with a backpack full of culture, and some are coming in ready to learn, and others are coming in not so ready to learn. But everyone in our community is sending their students the best and most prepared that, that they can be. And so really, it's that team, and I write down those buzzwords, but you all hit them in terms of, I heard, the together, team, anchoring in, data. It really, it really digs deep. In that first slide that, that Mrs. Potter showed is also that reminder, I think it's coming back, is that sort of umbrella of diversity, equity and inclusion underneath it is curriculum instruction, human resources, business and finance, equity and access. And so this team who sits with the board at every board meeting and our meetings, everyone's dedicated again to make sure that all students feel that support when they come into building. When we say all students, and Penfield has said that for a long time, we're really doubling down on the meaning of all students. And my last piece is, once we have it in place and we're doing well, then those pieces that kids bring with them, whether it be family, background, homeless, a foster student, a shift in home, none of that should be seen from the surface, because kids know that school is a safe spot, the adults around them are there to support, and when students begin to struggle, we have systems in place to step in and help. So just I commend you. Thank you very much. My last piece is that I did hear that Melissa Green is new this year. She is not. She is a wonderful social worker who's been at the high school for a long time, but this year, luckily, we, we got her into our K-12 position to have that larger impact. And Dabney is new, and we're very glad to have her here. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
And this is where, as superintendent, I also say thank you, and nobody will judge if you go home now. You do not need to stay for the rest of the meeting, so have a wonderful evening.
Excuse us.
And I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl to walk us through budget. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl to walk us through budget.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So we have a lot to get through tonight, so I will, in the interest of Davna, try not to be too long-winded. So a couple of different topics to discuss tonight. Tonight is the penultimate discussion regarding the budget development process at our next meeting in April. We'll have a recommended budget for the board to adopt and bring forward to the community at the May vote. So tonight, we have our latest appropriations updates. We'll do kind of a high-level overview of the BOSI's budget now that that is more or less finalized. We'll take a look at revenue updates as the state has released their one-house budgets, the Assembly and the Senate, so giving us a good idea of what's going to be contained in the legislative budget in the next two weeks or so, and then some local funding impacts of which we're aware at this point. Tonight, we also need to adopt the legal notice of the budget vote and budget hearing date and the propositions thereon so that we can meet the filing deadlines. They have to be legally posted 45 days before the election, so we'll be doing that next week. And then we have two facilities items for consideration for the board this evening. One is a consultant contract for construction management services related to the capital project that the community had passed back this, in December. And then another is a consultant contract for the required 2022 building condition survey and associated five-year capital plan. And then finally, we do also have a tax or chariari settlement proposed to the board this evening. This one is a longstanding claim. This is over 10 years old, so I give a lot of credit to our council, the petitioner, and the town of Penfield for getting a settlement ready for your consideration on this one tonight. So as I mentioned, second-to-last meeting for budget development purposes. After that, we'll have an adopted budget that will be brought forward to the community through our budget newsletter and our budget hearing, and then finally, that vote in May. So the expense updates that we have tonight are, as I mentioned, the updated BOSI's data. We have a clear understanding of academic programming. In March is really kind of when we double down on what the staffing enrollment needs are going to be, what the pupil learner needs are through the annual review process, so some clarity there. I have increased fuel budgets a little bit for transportation and O&amp;M from the prior two meetings when we had Mr. English and Mr. Gallo here to discuss kind of their operational budgets, just based on some things that are happening in the futures markets. As I mentioned, those one-house budgets were released by the legislature. We'll kind of do a deep dive into those a little bit to try to glean out some insights that'll apply to our budget. And then finally, we do have a levy recommendation at this point for the board, and with no anticipated changes in the state budget, that would be the levy recommendation we bring forward at our next meeting. So here is that high-level overview of our draft budget for next year. It stands at a 4.67% increase of $109 million, 211,415. This is down a little bit from where we were at our last meeting, but not by much. No drastic changes. Again, a lot of the bulk of the costs are devoted to our special programs, which is students with disabilities and also our career and technical education programs, occupational ed. Employee benefits up $1.5 million, and those central services are primarily devoted to those increased utility costs that we're seeing from electricity and natural gas. So I don't anticipate too many more changes in the next couple of weeks on the expenditure side of the budget. We will refine things as more information is known around any staff retirements or things like that. But this is kind of more or less where we're going to be, sort of in that 4.6 range. I did mention two meetings ago that that's our largest spending increase that we've had in about 10 years. But I will bring this information forward. Speaking to my colleagues around the county, we're not alone. And actually, we're kind of right in the middle of the range. There are some districts that are up to 6%, 7%, 8% in spending next year, just based on factors outside of their control. You know, the bottom of the Excel adds up the way it is, one way or the other. But it is at least somewhat reassuring to know that we're not alone in seeing these significant cost increases. Another way of looking at that $109 million is by object, and you can see that benefits and personnel costs make up about $4 million of that $4.8 million increase. No surprise there, and that typically our budgets are 75% to 80% tied up in personnel costs. We always say we're in the people business here, and our human capital is definitely, you know, the most precious thing we have to offer our community and our students. Of those contractual cost increases, that $500,000, the lion's share of that is devoted to utility costs. And then we do see a big decrease in that scheduled debt service drop-off as well. And we'll look at the BOSI's costs now. So BOSI's costs, year-over-year increase about 5.5% or $675,000. The big jumps are in those special programs. So those are not necessarily just students that are in a BOSI's placement, but also all of the special programming that BOSI's provides us. Interdependent services for kiddos in our non-public schools, all of the associated programs that we utilize through them, all the various closers. I did mention it last time, but the career and technical education, we're seeing a significant enrollment jump there. Those are really great programs. They're fantastic offerings. It's wonderful that our kids have access to those, but with all that enhanced interest, there is an enhanced cost. There was really good news out of the state budget regarding aidability of those programs that we'll discuss in a moment. But by and large, those are the big increases. The one in district office is for a service contract that we recently discovered that we can route through a BOSI's closer to generate aid on, something that we had been spending straight off our general fund budget, not through BOSI's. So that's why that line item is up so much. And then transportation, as we discussed when Mr. Gallo was here, decreasing next year, not for a lack of demand. We would love to do more transportation with BOSI's, but they just simply don't have the supply to offer additional routing right now. So that is why that line item is down. So before I move to the other side of the ledger, the revenue information, any questions on where we stand with the projected expenditures for next year? So as I mentioned, the one-house budgets were released by the State Assembly and the State Senate last week. So in this table, you can see what Governor Hochul had proposed in her executive budget back in January, as it relates specifically to education. And it's a little strange this year that education has gotten so little talk in the budget negotiation process. Typically, it's one of those one or two top sticky items, but this year, it's been more on other kind of policy issues. So she did continue the three-year phase-in of foundation aid, and the Assembly and Senate have agreed to that. So that's what we'll anticipate when the budget's released in two weeks. There was some discussion early on that maybe that would just be a starting point, and that there would be more money associated, but given some of the economic uncertainty that's out there, I think that kind of got extinguished. But still very good news that we'll see that phase-in of foundation aid, or at least we think we will. UPK, the governor had just not proposed anything, just status quo funding. So for Penfield Central, we're really excited to offer UPK this year, but we were bound to that 116 students at $5,400 per kid. Both the Assembly and Senate made childcare a real tenet of their packages this year, which included potential increases for UPK. So they were a little bit different in their proposals, so we'll see what happens in the next two weeks, but it's something we're keeping an eye on very closely as we move ahead. Electric school buses. So this one caught some folks by surprise when the governor proposed this. So her proposal is that all new school buses sold would have to be zero emission by 2027, and then all school buses on the road in New York State by 2035 would have to be electric. So sort of that eight-year phase-out of diesel or gasoline buses. So the Assembly and Senate both basically put agreement to this, just in a little bit different terms. So the Assembly basically agreed to that timeline, whereas the Senate said the implementation would be delayed till 2029, and that they also are proposing that it's a $1 billion voter referendum put forward to the entire state in this November's election to help finance that. So we'll kind of see what happens with that. So when the governor had proposed this, I think there was some general skepticism that maybe that was too aggressive of a timeline, and that the Assembly and the Senate might scale that back a little bit. Then when we got word out of Albany that it was, it's coming. So it's something that we're going to be probably spending a lot of time on in the years ahead, but a really interesting development there. I mentioned earlier that those occupational education costs for us were going up, and there was really good news out of the Assembly and the Senate budgets. Because right now, when we receive BOSI's aid, we only get aid on the first $30,000 of a BOSI's member's salary. And that has been in effect for 30 years or so. I think it goes back to like 1990. And it's been discussed to raise that cap over the years because most teachers typically make more money than that, but it's not, it's always just been kind of a political non-starter. So it was good news in this year's budget that the Assembly and Senate in their one-house budgets, it's not final yet, both recommended a three-year phase-in to $60,000. So next year would be a $40,000 cap, $50,000, and then $60,000 in three years. So we would potentially be able to see more BOSI's aid on some of those programming options for our kids. Capital outlay projects. So these are capital projects that you contain within your general fund budget. They don't require a separate community vote. They're $100,000 maximum spend, so they're sometimes difficult to do for a district of our size. A lot of smaller districts rely on them, but when you involve state ed and the Office of Facilities Planning, you need to involve your architects. So there's a lot of fees just on that side of things, so you get very limited in the amount of work you can do within a school year. And then you're also bound to that fiscal year. So by the time you get your budget approved, you're out to bid in the summer, you might only have a week or two to get that work done. And that's typically like the winter break, or February break, or spring break. There has been calls for years to raise that cap so that more districts could take advantage of it because the scope of $100,000 is typically just a like-for-like. You can replace lights and doors and windows, but it has to be kind of in one building, and you have very limited flexibility. So the Assembly proposed increasing that cap to $250,000, and the Senate proposed increasing it up to half a million dollars. So some potential developments there. Because it's only been $100,000, it's been difficult for us to engage in that work, but I have to tell you, if it goes up to $250,000 or $500,000, that becomes very advantageous from an aid ratio standpoint, that it's something we want to start considering in our budgets on an annual basis. I'll discuss a little bit more about those capital outlay projects in a second. And then I discussed it two meetings ago, but that homeowner tax rebate credit that the governor had proposed, seems like there's mutual agreement, just a little bit different terms. It does seem like it would be capped to $250,000 for state income, but it does look like a substantial amount of money, like up to 66% or so of your star payment. So for folks on enhanced star, that could be close to $1,000 in a tax rebate this fall. For folks in the regular star, it would be based on your income, but certainly, you know, a decent chunk of change that would be coming from the state later. So hopefully, we have clarity on that when the budget is released in two weeks, but positive news that there seems to be some agreement there. So those outlay projects, as I said, it's an aided mini-bid opportunity. It is a public work threshold over $35,000, so it would have to be bid out for whatever work was associated to local contractors. Currently capped at that $100,000 level. It is included in the general fund budget, so it's a line item. It's an inter-fund transfer to the capital fund. So when the community approves the budget, they're ipso approving the project, so long as the project is contained in the budget newsletter and discussing the budget hearing what the scope of that work's going to be. Unlike a typical capital project where the aid flows over the course of 15 years, it all flows in the immediate year after. So you can get into a cycle where you're basically only paying out-of-pocket in that first year, and then every year thereafter, the aid basically pays for that year's project. So you can do it every year. It was put into place to allow for preventative maintenance, so you can kind of chip away at those little things versus waiting every five years for a big capital project. It is subject to those typical state approval processes, which right now are a challenge because the state only has two project managers for 700 school districts, so there is a wait associated with these things. Whereas now, if we just did it on our own, we could, you know, get something turned around in six weeks or so. We have identified a potential opportunity for next year, depending on what happens with this. It would be installing dishwashers at our kitchens here at PHS and at Betrel, based on some of the staffing shortages that we've had in food service, but also just save some water, save some time for those folks. So potentially more to come at the next meeting, but I wanted you to be aware of that proposal being out there and how the process works. So I want to discuss a little bit about levy. So back in January, in our first meeting in February, we discussed our tax cap formula. The formula allowed this year for us to increase taxes $2.4 million or 3.64% without seeking supermajority approval, so just that 50% threshold. I have said the last two meetings that based on our budget development process, I didn't think we'd have to go up to that 3.6% level. So my recommendation this evening is shown in that, the right column there. Essentially, what we're doing is reducing that $1,23,203 from the available carryover from last year's flat 0% levy to bring our levy this year to that $68,311,079, which would represent a $1.4 million levy increase or 2.11%. So now that we have somewhat of a confirmation from the state that that foundation aid funding is going to come through, we can make this commitment at this point. So if nothing changes, nothing, no surprises are in the state budget, that's the levy that I'll recommend to fund the budget at our next meeting in April. So then with that, I kind of wanted to just discuss what happens with local funding and some of the impacts. So some of this might be a review, but I think it's always a worthy refresher. So we start with the tax levy. So that's that number that's bound by that formula that's been in place for 11 or 12 years now. We add in the town assessments, as we'll discuss in a moment. Two of our six towns are planning a reassessment this year, so that has a major impact on tax rates. And then we'll discuss how New York State comes in and equalizes those rates based on what they perceive to be fair market value. And then the spit-out of all of that data is the actual tax rates for our towns. So I think this infographic is helpful. This represents two identical houses in two separate towns. So for instance, for us, it would be Penfield and Brighton. On market value, the house would be worth $250,000, but one of the houses is only assessed at $185,000, and one of the houses is actually assessed at $250,000. So the house that's assessed at what would be perceived to be market value has that equalization rate of 100% from the state. Yep, those assessments look good to us. Whereas the house that's only assessed at $185,000 has that equalization rate of 74%, essentially saying that it's 26% underfunded, or under-assessed. So the town tax rate for that lower assessment is therefore higher, whereas the tax rate where the equalization rate is 100% is lower. So they both end up paying the same amount on their tax bills. So it's always a little bit confusing, I know, for folks, so I think it's a helpful refresher to see that, that just because your assessment's going up doesn't mean your tax bill's going to go up. Just because your tax rate's going up doesn't necessarily mean your tax bill's going to go up. But we'll have much more information about this, hopefully, at our April meeting, and then, again, at the budget hearing in May as well. As I mentioned, we do currently have tentative levels of assessment out for the next year, and Penfield and Macedon are scheduled to be reassessed, whereas Brighton, Perrington, Pittsburgh, and Walworth, you can see they're actually declining from last year based on the acceleration in housing values that we're seeing in the marketplace. So I don't have all of the assessments, so I can't do a tax rate projection at this point, but hopefully, we'll have that data in April. And then this is just a look back of what Penfield's true value tax rate history is, going back to the 08, 09 year where we were at $24.52 of tax rate per $1,000 worth of assessed value, and this past year, we're down to $23.04. Basically, what's happened with this in the last five years, you can see, is that the assessments, the taxable base of properties, has just increased much faster than what we've levied, our tax increases. And I fully expect, based on the early data that I have, that the true value tax rate will decline again for next year. So here is kind of the all-encompassing balanced budget for where we stand here on March 22nd. So the categorized expenditures from last year and for next year's current projection, and then the associated revenues. You can see at this point that new levy figure factors into the recommendation that we had a couple of slides ago. The New York State education aid factors in that three, or that three-year phase-in of foundation aid formula, so that 10% increase in education aid for us. It might change a little bit in the governor's budget, or the legislative budget that is released, so any modifications there will be minor. We're still anticipating a big increase in those county sales taxes, nearly 8%. All those other miscellaneous revenues. And then the last piece is that assigned fund balance. So last year, we dropped that down to $459,000 from where we had traditionally been around $2 million. $2 million, just based on we didn't need to apply any more fund balance than that. And again, similar for next year, a low amount, sort of around $300,000 currently. That could change a little based on what the state budget is, but significantly lower than where we've always traditionally been, sort of around 2% to 3% of the annual operating budget. And then no utilization of reserves as supplemental revenue, once again. So next steps in our budget process, so we are anticipating, and the governor has said that she thinks it'll be on time, a New York State budget due on April 1st. That is a Friday, so it wouldn't surprise me if that bled into the next Monday or maybe early Tuesday. We have our board meeting scheduled for April 12th, at which time we'll have the superintendent's proposed budget for board consideration and approval of the property tax report card. Our budget hearing is scheduled for May 3rd here at PHS. I think that's at 6:30. Budget notices mailed to the community shortly thereafter with information about the budget in a more detailed fashion. And then that statewide vote and board election is May 17th. And again, the legal notices for review tonight. It contains two propositions on the ballot for that evening, the school operating budget for next year, and then we have three Board of Education seats, two of which are three-year terms and one is the one-year term for the vacant position. And then, as I just mentioned earlier, we just have those two facilities items for review tonight. Construction Management Services contract was a great process. We have a wonderful relationship with campus construction. Contract was fully vetted by our team of attorneys and myself and Mr. English. We're excited to be working with them in concert, as we have. We have a great relationship with the team over there. And then SEI is on the building condition survey. They had previously done our 2010 and 2015 building condition survey. It was delayed, it was supposed to be in 2020, so we're now two years later on that. But very competitive pricing for that. So we are excited to move forward. It's, you know, we just approved a large capital project, but we're already thinking about, you know, what are the long-term capital needs for Penfield to make sure we're reaching all of our objectives in the years ahead. With that, try not to be too long-winded, I'll open it up for board discussion.
Members, questions, comments for Dr. Driffl? No, everybody's good?
I got a couple.
You got two?
Yeah.
You can only have two, no, just kidding.
I'm not going to throw a question to Dr. Driffl because it keeps me in a loop, but I definitely think you did a nice job listening to Davnae there and hit the high points, without a doubt. I think it's so critically important, but you pointed out, and I think it's so important for this board to also say thank you to the board, is, you know, last year, thanks to Dr. Driffl and the work from others before him and from the board, I believe we're the only district in the county, if not larger than that, that went out with the 0% levy. And, you know, did that through a lot of careful planning and discussion and thoughtfulness of the budget. And then this may, as you look at it where we stand now, is we are not looking to go up to that cap, which is something that districts do, you go up to the cap. But again, it goes back to that careful budget planning, listening to the board, taking the board's direction in terms of where we need to be. And so looking at that levy potentially, unless something changes with that budget at a 2.115% is, again, going to be lower than many of the areas around us. So just, you know, kudos to Dr. Driffl and the entire business office and the board. And then the last thing I'll just mention, really for Ms. Harvey, is that one day you will be at a meeting and somebody will reference how long ago something was, and they'll say like three decades, like 30 years ago. And then you'll go, "That was 1992 and it feels like yesterday?" So also, thank you, Dr. Driffl, for making me feel old. So 30 years, it's just 1992, it was like yesterday.
Wasn't it 1970? I was like, wasn't that 30 years ago?
I know, 30 years, it always goes, always 1970. All right, so thank you, that was my two pieces, but just again, thank you to the board for that direction and as we continue to look at that budget. And thank you to Dr. Driffl and the business office to really dig into all of that. So thank you.
Does that conclude?
That concludes superintendent reports.
Woo-hoo.
All right.
I'd like to say we're done, but unfortunately, we're not. And I have a whole lot to read tonight, so I apologize in advance, but thank you to Dr. Driffl and Ms. Irkowitz for paring some things down for me. So we have a couple of financial items, and there's a few that are roll call. So are we ready?
Yep, wherever you are.
Here we go. I'll get my glasses on. Our first item is the notice of annual meeting budget vote and election. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District, Monroe County, New York, will be held in the senior high school building in said district on Tuesday, May 3, 2022, at 6:30 PM for the presentation of the budget. That the annual meeting vote and election of the qualified voters of the Penfield Central School District of the Town of Penfield, Monroe County, New York, will be held at the senior high school in said district on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM, at which time the polls will be open to vote by voting by machine or ballot upon the two following items. To elect two members of the board for three-year terms commencing July 1, 2022, and expiring on June 30, 2025. And to elect one member of the board for the remaining unexpired term commencing on May 18, 2022, and expiring on June 30, 2023. And to adopt the annual budget of the school district for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. May I have a motion and a second to approve the annual meeting budget vote and election?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? And this is a roll call?
Yes. Robert Babiarz?
Aye.
Emily Belser?
Aye.
Lisa Benati-Chizzi?
Aye.
Catherine Dean?
Aye.
And Kristen Harley?
Aye.
All are in favor, none opposed?
All righty. Now we are on to 6B, Authorization to Contract with Campus Construction. Be it resolved as follows. The Board of Education approves the retention of campus construction to provide construction management services and proceed with the 2021 transportation facilities project in accordance with the terms and conditions of the contract. The Board of Education hereby authorizes the President of the Board, the Superintendent of Schools, or their designee to enter into the Construction Management Services contract on behalf of the Board of Education and to take all actions necessary or convenient to proceed under the contract in connection with the project. Upon Board of Education approval, this resolution will take effect immediately. May I have a motion and a second to approve the consultant contract for Construction Management Services? Well, that's lots of Cs.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments?
No.
All those in favor? Wait, is this a roll call?
No.
Oh, sorry. Okay, motion passes. Oh, we're getting there, we're getting there. We are on 6C. This is in agreement with the SEI Design Group for the building condition survey that Dr. Driffl talked about. The regulations of the Commissioner of Education require that school districts periodically complete a building condition survey and five-year capital facilities plan. The goal of the five-year plan is to collect, coordinate, analyze, and prioritize facility infrastructure and building program needs on a district-wide basis. The plan must be completed in cooperation with a licensed architect, and building aid is available to support the cost of developing the plan. May I have a motion and a second that the Superintendent of Schools be authorized to enter into an agreement with SEI Design Group for the purpose of completion of the required building condition survey and five-year capital facilities plan as described in your packet?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? And then we are on number D. This one's also a roll call, the last one. This is for the tax, I hate that word, tell me that word again, surcerary, surcerary. Be it resolved that the Board of Education agrees to settle the tax surcerary proceedings commenced by petitioner in accordance with the terms set forth in your agenda and in the form approved by Fiera Ferenza PC, and hereby delegates Fiera Ferenza PC the authority to execute such settlement documents. This resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a motion and a second to approve this recommended settlement?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? And this is a roll call.
Robert Babiarz?
Aye.
Emily Belser?
Aye.
Lisa Benati-Chizzi?
Aye.
Catherine Dean?
Aye.
And Kristen Harley?
Aye.
All are in favor?
That wasn't so bad. All righty. Now we are, where are we?
Number seven.
Seven. We're on 7A. So this is an update to, I don't, did we talk about this tonight? But this is an update to our special education committee and subcommittee appointments. We normally do this in July, correct?
Yes, we did.
Yes. So we normally do this in July, so this is an update because of an interim that we have at the high school.
Oh, okay.
So be it resolved that the attached list of individuals be appointed to the District Committee on Special Education, District Preschool, Preschool Committee on Special Education, and subcommittees for Special Education at Penfield High School, Bay Trail, Cobble, Harris Hill, Ending Landing, and Scribning Road in accordance with Commissioner's regulations. So may I have a motion and a second, please, that we approve these lists?
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments on that? All those in favor? All right, we're good. All right, so that brings us to tonight's visitor speaking time. We have two speakers this evening. As a board, we always appreciate comments from the public. Our comments should be limited to three minutes, please. We also ask that you do not speak about specific students in your comments or staff, and that all comments are according to our code of conduct. Our first speaker tonight is Ms. Becky Hollenbeck. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Becky Hollenbeck, and I live at 3316 Monroe Wayne County Line Road. I come before the board again to speak on a matter of transportation. My issue that there is that there's not any standard when it comes to deciding the distance that a family lives from their private school. I know that my house is within the 15 miles of the school, however, my daughter has been denied transportation this whole school year and most likely for next year because the standards keep changing, making her school conveniently 15.1 mile away from my house. Last summer, the Transportation Department told me that we lived more than 23 miles away because the buses were not allowed to cross railroad tracks. When I brought this up, Dr. Putnam said that that wasn't true, and the mileage was changed to 17.1 miles, and then it was changed to 15.5 miles, and then it went up to 15.8, and somehow it went back up to 16.3 miles. Staff finally took the route that I provided, and they got 15.1 miles. And when Dr. Putnam drove the route himself, he actually said that it was under 15 miles to get from the school to my house, but somehow the mileage increased again to 15.2 miles. I really appreciate everyone's time and effort, but I've provided Google routes, pictures, videos, everything I could think of to show that the distance is under the 15 miles both ways. The goalpost also keeps moving. Section 3635 of the Education Law states the distances in each case are measured by the nearest available routes from the home to the school. When I provided that the school is only 14.3 miles away from my home, I was told it had to be in the back entrance. When I provided that the back entrance is 14.7 miles, I was told it had to be up at the bus loop. When I provided that the bus loop was only 15 miles, I was told I was wrong, and it was actually 15.1. No proof, no routes, just I'm sorry, it's too far. No one has been able to tell me why my videos and proof are not approved. My van is a 2019, and there shouldn't be nothing wrong with the odometer. I then asked if the school would be able to at least transport her home from her school, seeing that we agreed that that distance was at least under the 15 miles. And then I was told the school does not do that. However, on the request for the non-public school transportation form online, it asks if transportation is needed one way and not the other. So why is that question asked if it's not able to be done? I keep being told that the decision has been made due to the fact that you guys want to remain consistent, which I completely understand, but I see anything but consistency in this decision. And I want to know, what are the next steps that I can get blessing for my daughter for school, at least for next year? Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Anne Marie Scorsone.
I don't have internet in this room, and my notes for tonight were on that, so I quickly jotted some ideas down. My name is Anne Marie Scorsone. I reside at 11 Creekside Circle in Penfield. I am the mother of twins who attend Bay Trail, and between me and my partner, Christopher here, we have an additional four, I have four stepsons, so it's six of us in the household. I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to speak today. I wanted to directly thank Tasha Potter and Dr. Maloney for meeting with PARA this last month. We really appreciated you taking the time to meet with us. We went over a lot of what was presented this evening in our conversation. One of the feedback that we provided to both Tasha and Leslie was the need for a community dashboard of DEI progress, and I think the timeline that was presented tonight would probably fit most people's needs. We offered to the DEI group that PARA, Penfield Anti-Racist Alliance, is poised to help in any way that we can within schools as focus groups for the DEI school groups or for the central school district. And we were asked the question, well, what are our community resources? So to answer that question, we are going to poll our community members to find out what their superpowers are and how they will be good ancestors for our community. I wanted to give you an update on upcoming PARA community events. We are going to hold a mutual aid drive on April 9 from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We are hoping to use Roth Fuss, I have a hard time saying that word, Roth Fuss Park will be there rain or shine, and we'll be collecting personal hygiene items, household items like toilet paper, you know, your sanitation, or the, you know, cavi wipes, that's a works term, sorry, toilet paper, paper towel, menstrual products, deodorant, kind of like your closet that you're going to put together. We collect this various times throughout the year to supply our community boxes that are located throughout the community where people can come and get things. We're looking for canned foods, dry foods, canned openers are important if you're going to give canned foods. We also wanted to mention that we were pleasantly surprised by Dr. Kinney's WDKX advertisement for a diverse workforce. We really appreciated that. And to Dr. Driffl, I wanted to make some humble recommendations for your budget. As a family with six kids, if all of them went to the central school district to receive care and education, our school lunch would be about $300 a month and upwards of four grand a year to just provide lunch for our children if they were all enrolled in the school district. My family has personally benefited from the school lunch opportunity that was afforded to everyone.
Thank you. All right, board members, we are on president remarks and presentations. So we have a draft schedule of our next year board meeting already. Wow, that came fast, didn't it? So that is just a draft that's up for discussion, and then we typically, I think, vote in our next meeting. So if there's any comments or questions, you guys can email myself or Mark on that.